Yes. Okay, now we're live streaming again. So I'll just start over. Good evening, tonight is Monday, August 14th, then we have a quorum, so I'll call the meeting to order. Our first order of business is agenda approval, and we did have a request to remove the review of Policy 506 from the agenda tonight due to our discussion earlier and the need to make significant revisions to it. So do I have a motion to approve the revised agenda for tonight's meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We will now vote to approve the revised agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Tonight's agenda is approved. Dr. Stanley, would you please review tonight's agenda for us?
Absolutely, we are really excited for Excellence in Action to recognize two of our newest principals. They'll be here this evening. We have several consent agenda items. We are going to receive a security update from Director Monsas Daily, an overview of our current e-learning plan to make sure that the community is updated on it. We're seeking action on our ELA coursework and resource recommendations. And then we have a couple of discontinuance items that Dr. Anne Marie Leland will talk to us about. And then a calling for the 2023 general election. We have policy review. And then, of course, any updates from me and the board.
Thank you, Dr. Stanley. Moving on to our Excellence in Action, and we would like to welcome our newest members of the Hornet family, our new middle school principals. If you would like to come up to the table. Yay!
Well, I am incredibly pleased to welcome and introduce this, I call them a dynamic duo right now. First of all, Patrick Bass, who is our new Valley View Middle School principal. He is joining us from Boise, Idaho, where he served as a junior high principal. He was junior high in that space. But then he's also served as an assistant principal in Arizona. He just has a passion for reading and keeping up on best practice. We know that he has the ability to really build relationships with students. I want to say during the interviews, it was hands down that they wanted Mr. Bass as their principal. And the reason why they said they wanted him as their principal is because he was relatable, and they knew he would take care of them. And that really struck me as I got that information. So we're just incredibly excited to have him here. He is also a longtime Edinaite. He actually lived here for a while, and so it's kind of like coming back home. So welcome, Principal Bass. And then this next person, I'm going to use your full name, Patricia. Patricia Pettis, you are no stranger in our community. You know, she's been with us for a long time. She has served at Southview for 17 years. She's most recently served as dean there and just really building the capacity of staff. We were thrilled when she actually submitted her resume. We did not know if she'd consider herself ready to step up and move into the position when they announced that Tricia was chosen for the position. We heard the cheers over here in ECC from the staff. She has just played such a leadership role, even most recently at our Leadership Advance, where she was providing training for all of the leaders as it relates to some learning around how we work together. And so, Tricia, we're just really excited that you are willing to step up and take us on as a leader in the district. We know that you live the epitome of our vision for each and every student to discover their possibilities and thrive. And we just want to formally welcome you as a principal. So welcome, Principal Pettis.
You two are welcome to say something, but you don't have to, not to put you on the spot. And if anyone in the public is hearing chattering in the background, Principal Bass has the cutest son, future Hornet, that is toddling around back there watching cars. So, yes, so which, he is enjoying the board meeting a lot, I assume, so.
Do I have to hold it? Just push it? This reminds me of that alien thing that we watched on Capitol Hill. I can say something? Do you want to say something first?
Either one?
Go ahead.
Should we do rock, paper, scissors? Really? Okay. Ready?
It's one, two, three, shoot.
Yeah. One, two, three, shoot. Wait, oh, I did it wrong.
Okay, so one, two, shoot.
Okay, ready? Ready, go. One, two, shoot. One, two. I was about to re- yeah, I was about to re-send.
Well, thank you for that introduction. Dr. Stanley and I have a passion and a heart for Edina and especially Southview. I am so proud that I get to serve in this role because I know the team and they're just amazing, and the kids and the families. And then to start with Patrick at the same time is super exciting, and it feels like an extra special opportunity because we're really excited to align and partner because we're both starting out in this role together at the same time and already feeling like collaborative synergy and excited. We feel it in our staffs too. Our staffs are excited for us to align and collaborate. And I think it's going to be a really exciting year. So thanks.
I think first, I feel really fortunate, blessed to work alongside Tricia. Literally just today, I was in the car with Big Rob back here, who's going to be doing some DJing and Get Connected Day. Also, Saint Olaf Ole, Um Yaya's in the house. And we actually had a conversation about working Genius in the car. I was telling him, based on some of the things he was saying, you know, I think you might be a discernment kind of guy like me, even though I'm not real sure if I am. I really think I'm invention. So he had to hear this again from me. So Dr. Smuzzel and some folks in the room know that I had a hard time with that piece, but I've enjoyed learning from you, and I think that's something that I've been talking about quite a bit. Overall, you know, it's flattering. I didn't realize this piece about the interview committee. It's nice to hear that. It's flattering. Comes with some great responsibility, and I want everyone in the room to know that. I don't take that lightly. It means a lot to me. I have my family here because a big draw to get to Minnesota was to be with family. And as I got to see the polling from the previous principal, our assistant principal, Eric Low, there were all these comments from teachers that talked about what they wanted to see for the future of Valley View. And a lot of it was around culture and staff wellness. And family is where a lot of that really was the anchor for this community. I really want to lift that up. I really want to lift it up. I feel super emotional in this moment, but I'm very grateful. I don't take it lightly. I want to do a really great job, and I think Valley is going to be in a great spot. So I'm fortunate to be here, know that I'm ready to get to work. Each and every does mean each and every, and each and every goes beyond our students. It's each and every teacher, it's each and every parent, it's each and every custodian. It's our full community of Edina Public Schools. And I really want to stand by that when we say each and every. It means a lot to me. So thank you for having me. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. You made me cry, so thank you. Appreciate it. Yay! Are you going to bring him every Monday for our board meetings? He's lighting up the room. Okay, thank you. Next, we have hearings for member of the public, and we do not have any requests to speak tonight. So we're going to move on to our consent agenda. We had a request to remove the DISH easement agreement off the consent agenda. So do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda without the DISH easement agreement?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We will now vote to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The consent agenda is approved. Do I have a motion to approve the DISH easement agreement?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And for the DISH easement, there were just a couple of questions around this. If, thank you for coming up, Director Woodard. And go ahead. Yep?
Thank you, Director Woodard, for coming up. As I, the reason I requested for this to just be pulled is to better understand what this was asking. And as I read through it in the consent agenda, understanding that it would be around Coolman Field. So just speaking a little bit to your confidence in the agreement and the disruption, or if there would not be any disruption to our fall sports season, and just to talk to the board about your recommendation here.
Absolutely, Director Gabor. Good evening, board members. The specific installation of the fiber optic cables will run from the north end of the Coolman Stadium bleachers towards the south end. So there's going to be a conduit attached to the back of the bleachers. The cable will simply run across the bleachers and out the other side. Absolutely no disruption to any school activities.
Thank you. Can you also speak to, is this, because this is the first time that I'm seeing an easement like this in our consent agenda, is this something that is pretty common? Do we have other situations throughout the district where we have such agreements?
I believe we have numerous easement agreements throughout the district. I'm not fully aware of the extent of the inventory. However, this is a common item that you'll see on many board agendas throughout the state or country.
And is there, in the agreement with DISH, who sets the, like, how do we determine the fair market value for letting them use our property to run these cables?
So DISH approached us with a figure, an initial figure, and we pushed back with a figure that we thought was fairer. That was the extent of the analysis. It's a nominal fee for a very basic installation. And keep in mind that this was also reviewed and discussed at our August Finance Committee meeting.
And I think, just one more question. And I know this is in here, but I'm having trouble finding it. So this is in perpetuity, or is this, how long does this agreement last?
I believe it's a 30-year term.
Okay.
And there's going to be a $5,000 fee paid to us upfront, and another five within, I believe, 12 months.
Thank you for explaining this. I had no problem with it. I just wanted to, for my own understanding, understand what that was, what this agreement was saying.
Absolutely, you're welcome.
Do any other board members have questions? All those in favor of approving the DISH easement agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The agreement is approved. Thank you for coming up. And we're going to move on to our discussion items. Our first item up for discussion is Edina Public Schools' physical security update with our Director of District Media and Technology, Director Monsas Daily. Welcome.
Good evening, Chair Allenberg, Superintendent Stanley, members of the board. It has been a while. Tonight, we are going to review our district safety and security plan. This is an annual review of this plan, where we provide updates to the board as we make changes and as we update our security practices and protocols. I think I can do this? Or I just point? All right. So Edina Public Schools is committed to the safety and security of all individuals on our campuses. And we know that events are going to occur on our campuses. We can't always prevent them. But we do know that we can enact best practices, and we can continue to improve upon our current practices to increase our security posture. The biggest thing that we can say about this is that we adopt a layered security approach, meaning it's not just one thing that's going to solve all of our security concerns and questions. It might be technology, it might be communication, it's going to be our policies, it's going to be our practices. The nice thing about Edina Public Schools is our partnership with Edina Police and Fire. I think many school districts don't have that as an opportunity, and we have a very strong relationship with them. And so I'm very pleased that that's part of how we formulate and how we start to look and structure our plan. This plan and any, most of our security updates involve a lot of stakeholders. We involve our cabinet group. It goes through the board, obviously, through policy and through other committees. We, like I said already, work with our Edina Police and Fire. We work with our district leadership team. So there's many people involved in making sure that we're continually evaluating and looking at our safety procedures and practices. I think I just point, and they actually do the clicking. So one of the biggest updates to our security plan for this year is the establishment, well, not establishment. We have always had a district emergency response team, otherwise known as DIRT. And this year, we added several members to that team. In the past, there's just been a smattering of cabinet members that were part of this team. This year, we have included all cabinet members as a part of our district emergency response team. And really, that is intentional because we need all hands on deck should in a situation arise. And all of our cabinet team needs to be trained and prepared to help in the event of a crisis or a reunification effort. You will also see included on there our Director of Buildings and Grounds and our Buildings and Grounds Manager. So we have a large group of people that would help in the event of a crisis in our district response, district reunification, and as well as a debrief afterwards. Our building emergency response teams, another group of teams that we've always had, those include our building administrators, principals, assistant principals, our administrative deans, health services staff. One thing we've just, that's always been a part of our BERT team, but that we've kind of called out more this time, is inclusion of a lead custodian. They're very integral to what we do in terms of safety and crises, and they know the building probably better than anybody else. So it's really important that they are part of those BERT teams. And then other building staff, as designated by administrators, obviously can be a part of that team. We do have classroom teachers on our BERT teams, but we try to keep classroom teachers with students because in the event of a crisis, they need to be responsible for the students in their, obviously under their care, where our building administrators, deans, and other staff can kind of take on that role of incident command. This already came up at a previous board meeting, but just to highlight it again, I am very excited that this year, Edina Public Schools will be launching Raptor Visitor Management at all of our district buildings. And Raptor Visitor Management really just provides us an extra layer of security so we know who is in our buildings, one, in the event of a crisis, and we can ensure that people that maybe shouldn't have access to our buildings do not. Essentially, how Raptor Visitor Management works is that a visitor that comes to one of our buildings will present the front office staff with their identification. There's multiple forms of identification that are available or that can be used. So I really want to stress that. It isn't just the state-issued driver's license. Raptor can accept passports, really anything that has a first and last name and date of birth on it. But as I was saying, that ID is shown to the front office personnel who scan it within the system. And assuming that that visitor is approved, and there are no flags against the National Sex Offender Registry or our own Infinite Campus Flags, which would include things like no contact orders or custody agreements, that visitor will get a badge. The good thing about that badge is it is printed with a picture, as well as the first and last name of the individual, and the date that they are entering the building, as well as the location. And so we really want to help our students to see, to have that visual cue of people who are coming in and out of our buildings. Staff should have their Edina Schools badge, and our visitors should have a Raptor Visitor Management badge. And the badge itself actually says Raptor on it, so we know that it was printed from our system.
Can I ask a clarifying question? And I apologize. I might have asked this when you presented. If a parent has three students at three different schools, do they have to get cleared at all the schools?
They will always get a badge at every school, but they don't necessarily have to use their ID every time. The first time you've used your ID and you're cleared, for lack of a better word, the next time you go to a building, you could just say, "I'm Erica Allenberg." Your name goes in the system that prints out the badge that shows that you're already cleared.
So it's district-wide system?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to, I thought so, but I wanted to clarify in case parents are watching.
Really good clarifying question.
Thank you.
So you really only have to go through that ID process one time. You could do it every time if you want to, and then that badge will be printed, assuming you're cleared. If you are not cleared, alerts are sent to appropriate building personnel. So each building has a list of people, obviously including their administrators, who receive an alert when it pops up in Raptor. So the minute it pops up in Raptor, they get an alert, and then they can come and address that situation should the need arise. All right. Another thing that I am very excited about in terms of school safety and security measures and updates is the district's partnership with the I Love You Guys Foundation. The I Love You Guys Foundation is a nationwide foundation that really offers resources, training, support for crisis response and post-crisis reunification. And so all of the resources that we need to put our reunification plans in place and to respond to a crisis event, the I Love You Guys training, or the I Love You Guys Foundation helps us prepare for, train for, and have the resources for. The district leadership actually went through a training on August 4th. So all district leadership had the opportunity to meet with one of the trainers in person from the I Love You Guys Foundation, who went through a full-day training on a standard response protocol, which is how we respond to an event when it's happening and put kids, or put staff and students into safe conditions. And the standard reunification method, which is how we reunify in the event of a serious crisis, how we reunify students with their families. We will continue to train additional staff. We will train on the language of the I Love You Guys Foundation, which is something that we have adopted district-wide. And that consistency of language is really one of the important things for keeping our schools safe and secure. All staff have received training on the safe conditions through our HR department. That training was sent to all staff. And so that, again, that consistency in communication will be there for whether you're a bus driver, whether you're a classroom teacher, it doesn't matter. Everybody's going to have that same language. I think the biggest thing for us this year, I think I said that on the last slide, but I'm going to keep saying that they're all the biggest thing, right? Is the adoption of the I Love You Guys Safe Conditions. We have always had language around our safe conditions and the condition we assume when a crisis or an event occurs. But this year, we have adopted the I Love You Guys Foundation language so that we can create that consistency across our district. I do want to just review for the public our five safe conditions because I think it is really important for everybody out there to understand what happens in the event of a crisis and how we get to safety as soon as possible. So the first one is hold. And we enact a hold in a specific room or area if, say, for example, there is a medical emergency. We want to just kind of cordon off an area of the school and allow emergency personnel to respond. We would ask all staff and students to stay in a location, their classroom, a media center, a gym, clear all the hallways, but business in the school would continue as usual. So we'd still continue our classroom instruction until that area can be cleared. The next one is secure. And secure is when there's an event happening outside of our building. So when, for example, maybe there is a neighborhood police situation, we want everybody to get inside, we would lock all of our outside doors, and we keep everybody inside but resume business as usual until, again, that situation outside clears. Our next one is lockdown, which I think most of us are familiar with. The I Love You Guys Foundation gives us the language of locks, lights, and out of sight. So when we get into that safe condition, we lock all of the doors, we turn the lights off, and we get out of sight of any accessible area to the classroom or the space that we're in. I think most of us refer to this or can kind of equate this with an active shooter scenario. The next one is evacuate. In this case, typically for something like a fire drill, we leave the building. We exit the building to a specified location. Where in all of these, the I Love You Guys Foundation reminds us that we are always taking attendance and accounting for who is there at all times. And then our final one is shelter. So for us, most of the time, we know that there could be something like severe weather as a tornado, and then we want students and staff to take shelter in a designated area. And you can see on the slide, all of the logos and language, that's directly from the I Love You Guys Foundation. And all district buildings will have this updated logo and language in a laminated poster format that will be outside of all classrooms and common spaces across the district. And on June 17th, the board approved and adopted Policy 806, which is our emergency management policy. And in that policy, I won't review everything here because I think, again, that's been reviewed multiple times by the board. But we did clarify and update our safe conditions, which I just reviewed. We clarified that our incident commander, in most cases, will be the building administrator, building principal, as well as that principal will then designate two alternates that will assume command in the event of a crisis or emergency situation. And I shouldn't just say crisis or emergency because it could just be an incident, an incident in which we need to get everybody together and we need to, I think, the I Love You Guys Foundation talked about a moose being in the building or on the playground, right? So there just might be an incident in which we have to respond, hopefully not to a moose, though. In that Policy 806, we did clarify the members of our DIRT and BERT teams. And an additional part to Policy 806 was just making sure that all staff were trained by September 15th, and really making sure that we're intentional planning for anybody that's new after September 15th, new to Edina Public Schools as a staff member, as well as a student, our substitutes, volunteers, visitors, really anybody that would be in our buildings. And while legislation was adopted around Policy 806, I just want to make clear here tonight that Edina Public Schools does not conduct active shooter drills, exercises, or scenarios, simulations, anything in which we would simulate or pretend as if there was a weapon in our schools. So just putting that out there for everyone. I am super excited to have partnered with the Communications Department and Daphne Edwards and Jaclyn Swards to be having a website update that will include safety and security. So we'll be adding a safety and security section to the website coming this fall. Jaclyn has already started templating this out, so we kind of have an idea of what it's going to look like. But this will be a great resource for community and the fam, and families to know any updates to security practices or any relevant policies, any resources. You'll see information about the I Love You Guys Foundation and the safe conditions. It'll just be a great way to continue to communicate out some of these changes and updates as they come. And just a couple additional partnerships. I would say this one's not really additional, but an ongoing partnership with Edina Police and Fire. That is always going to be about, what's important to us, is that that opportunity to collaborate with them, have them in our buildings. They are invited to all of our BERT meetings. They are invited to all of our drills, and we want to keep that partnership continuing. We also really want to this year find some ways to continue to partner with the Edina community. And I'll talk a little bit more about that on the next slide, about one of the ways that we have or we're thinking about right now. We do have a parent group that has brought Be Smart to our Edina community. And Be Smart is a program that promotes secure gun storage and safety. And there's a little diagram off to the side. I know it's hard to see, but you can look up Be Smart online. I think one of the things that we also have to understand about safety and security is it's not just what we do in our buildings, but also what we're doing outside in our communities as well. So as I was saying, one of the ways we want to partner with our community is by having a security and safety community panel. And in partnership with Dr. Anne Marie Leland, we hope to, in the fall/winter of 2023, create a panel with our Edina Police and Fire, other community members and partners to discuss school safety and security, and just what that means to us as a whole school community, but as well as a whole Edina public, or whole Edina community. So look forward for more information on that. Maybe it will even be on the website at that time. And last but not least, just some kind of high-level next steps that we're working on in the immediate time. You know, we have plenty of things to continue to work on as it pertains to school safety and security. But we will continue to do tabletop exercises, which just give us that opportunity in a low-stakes environment to collaborate with others, to work out scenarios and incidents that might happen, to debrief them, to come up with plans, to come up with better processes and procedures. And we will do that with our cabinet team in August still, August 28th. And then we'll continue to do those tabletop exercises with Edina Police and Fire, as well as other members of our school community. One of the things that we, we know that is very important is solidifying reunification sites. So in the event of a wide-scale crisis, that we know that we have to move students from a school building to a different location, we will be adopting two sites that we would be able to provide as reunification sites. Those sites are generally not publicly shared now, but in the time of a crisis, those would be shared with impacted families and community members so that they could get to them. We are in the process right now of working on security system audits, which means that we test our lockdown buttons, we test our radios, we test our door badge systems to make sure everything's all in working order to start the school year. And another partnership that we have with the Communications Department is they are currently working on a set of crisis communication templates. And those templates will be able to be available to our building administrators and principals, as well as just district-wide staff in the event of a crisis. We know that there's a lot of things to think about, and communication can be difficult. So it'll be nice to have a set of templates that we can just go right to, to work through. And we will also continue to work around social, emotional needs post-crisis situations. So that is what I have around security updates. Are there any questions, comments, concerns?
Board members?
I don't have a question, but I think I just wanted to say thank you for the work that you-
that you and your team have done on this. This is good on so many levels and to hear some of the thought processes beside, you know, having lots of people understand what the process is, the reunification, the crisis communication. I mean, I think that is so tim- it's so timely and we know how quickly, if we're not on top of that, how quickly it can devolve. So, I really appreciate your work on this and just your comment that it's an ongoing basis. This is not, safety is not a one-and-done thing. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you as well. I appreciate the layered approach that you and rest, other district leaders are taking, understanding. It takes all of us, it takes different layers, it takes different tactics. So, I really appreciate all of that and all the work you all have done. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
I'm just going to stay here.
I was just going to say, I think you're here for a while, or the next one. So, our next discussion item is the 2023-2024 e-Learning Plan. And this discussion item is to inform parents of what our e-Learning Plan is for the upcoming school year.
Thank you. So, per Minnesota State statute, annually, we would always review or update families with the e-Learning Plan. I just want to make it very clear that this plan is simply just a review of what has always been. We have not changed anything or made any major changes. What we wanted to do with this process was just provide clarity and on the back end, understanding the logistical changes that we need to make to make sure this plan can be enacted. So, as I said, the actual components of the plan are not really different than what we've done in the past. But annually, we always put that out to families so they know what to do in the event of, obviously, an e-learning situation. And so, we would enact an e-Learning Plan if we had some sort of inclement weather. Per Minnesota State statute, we can use up to five days in one school year for that. And those days are counted as an instructional, a part of our instructional time. I'm going to just review some of the highlights or the high-level overview because, like I said, this is the same plan as last year. And then if the board has any questions, we can go there. So, last year, it was put into place that we would enact an e-Learning Day, meaning that students would be learning from home with a district-provided device or in grades nine through 12, other personal device. And in grades, early childhood, early childhood through grade five, that would be after the first district inclement weather day. So, their first day is theoretically a snow day in which our goal would be that we can coordinate devices, we can troubleshoot any access issues, and make sure that kids know what to do and know how to enact an e-Learning Day when the time comes. We do feel like that younger grade level needs just a little bit more time to get it all squared away and figured out. Grade six through 12 would immediately move to an e-Learning Day on that first snow day. Again, that is exactly the same as what we did last year. So, there's no changes there that really probably need further discussion, but again, we want to communicate that to the community. The one thing that you will see in this plan that is really just a logistical addition is that there's a district-wide preparation day on October 24th. And so, we just want to use that as practice so that we make sure, how does a device go home? Are you able to get connected to the internet? So that we can mitigate some of those things that might come up when there is an actual snow day. That's the only, like I said, really major change or I don't even want to say major change, that's a logistical change, not an actual change to the plan itself. This plan was, in the spring, reviewed by several stakeholders, including EME, our principals, we garnered some staff feedback for this, our media specialists were involved, and this was brought to Cabinet in May of 2023. So, we were able, 20, is that right? Yes, 2023. So, we were able to take what happened that last school year and just really review it. And again, like I said, nothing has changed, it's just more an update and information for the board as well as for community members. Questions? No?
Great. Thank you very much for reviewing that.
Thank you.
Now, I'll turn it over to our Policy Chair, Director Neville.
Thank you, Chair Ellenberg. So, we have several policies on our agenda for discussion this evening. As was mentioned at the beginning of the evening, we will not be discussing 506 Student Conduct in this session as it was discussed earlier in our work session. But beginning with Policy 213, School Board Committees, just some small modifications to this one, as well as 216, School Board Representation. These policies have been discussed through the School Board Retreat Process, so we've had an opportunity to review these throughout the year. So, I would ask if any board members have questions about 213 or 216 at this time.
I had one question, but I need to pull it up really fast. It was on the School Board Committee.
213?
Yeah, it was, sorry, I, it was about the Teaching and Learning Committee. It was basically the general statement of role of the Teaching and Learning Committee. The last sentence was changed from, that the committee will make a recommendation to the board on matters related to teaching and learning, including instructional. Basically, I was just wondering why that change was made to the general statement of the role.
Hopefully, the intent behind the change is to make it a more general comment about the direction of teaching and learning rather than the committee being prescriptive regarding specific instruction, which would come from Cabinet. But the Teaching and Learning Department would bring forward those kinds of recommendations. But is that helpful?
Yes.
But if you could just share what might not be clear, we can definitely take it back and reword it.
I was, I was a little concerned, it was, because we talk about curriculum, but then, it seemed, but it seemed vague but specific about curriculum. So, I was just, I was just a little confused. Like, if we wanted to be vague, I don't know, we took away like instructional programs, which to me actually seemed broader than curriculum. And so, I was just a little confused as to, it seemed oddly specific about curriculum. I'm not doing a very good job articulating why I.
What I appreciate, if I can, is that what I'm hearing is that particular part of the paragraph on the general statement of the role isn't clear. So, we should maybe take a look at that.
I felt that the, I felt that the use of the word instructional programs was a wider lens than specifically stating comprehensive curriculum, because I felt curriculum is limiting. And so, I was like, if you're trying to go the direction of just being super vague, then I could see saying the positive equitable learning environment. But then, I'm wondering about swapping out comprehensive curriculum for instructional programming or something like that.
Yeah, thank you.
So.
Yeah, thank you.
I have the note, and we can definitely take that back.
Thank you. Other than that, I had no comments.
Any other questions or discussion about 213 and 216? Okay, then we are going to move on to 303, which is Superintendent Selection and Contract. And again, the updates on this one are mostly for clarification. Any discussion? Okay, fantastic. I'm going to move on then to Policy 413, Harassment and Violence Prohibition, Students and Employees. And if I could invite Cabinet Member Sonia Saylor to join us. She is our expert on this particular policy. One change that I'll point out that was made in the edits of this policy is to strike the annual review provision. Other than that, I would just ask if there are any comments or questions regarding the edits proposed in 413. I think I've just given you extra steps in your day.
You probably needed the extra steps.
Okay, I don't know that there's, and I don't think that you have the lead on another policy, if I'm correct, that's up for today. So, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Then, Policy 504, Student Dress and Appearance. And let's see, this, the changes in this particular policy are to update with legislative changes regarding the Crown Act and legislation regarding Native American regalia. And if it's all right, I'd like to invite Franny Bakar to join us. She is our new Director of Achievement Equity in Multilingual Learner Programming. And she would be our best person for background on this policy if there are any questions.
I'll use this opportunity to ask a question. If you could just maybe give a quick summary of the Crown Act and what it requires and the protections that it then provides for those students, that would be helpful for, I think, the community.
Oh, yeah. So, the Crown Act in.
If you can just touch the button.
Sorry, you have to, yeah.
That's okay.
There we go. There we go.
Okay, thank you. The Crown Act comes from a national movement. And the national movement is that many students, individuals in schools who wore their hair natural, dreads, braids, afros, Native American students, longer hair, were, in some cases nationally, asked to cut their hair or prohibited from participating in events at school or asked to cut, modify their hair in some way. And so, the state of Minnesota has put it into legislation that a student is allowed to show up at school wearing their hair, how they would like to wear their hair, not needing to modify it in any way. So, I think, believe, it specifically says states, I did say Native American, some Native American boys like longer hair that does not need to be cut. It specifically calls out dreadlocks. I think everybody is seen on, everybody is probably seen on social media where a student has been going to participate in an event and they're watching their teammates cutting their dreadlocks. So, braids, afros, so that is what the Crown Act.
Thank you. Let me ask a clarifying question. I know we have seen things nationally to where student athletes have been required to do exactly that, to modify their hair based on the standards applied by whatever that jurisdiction was. Does this particular act abolish that requirement as well in student athletics?
Yes.
Excellent. And then the last thing I'd state is that, even though you're brand-new, which is lovely and great that you're here, Edina was not actually enforcing or engaging in any requirement of modification of students' hairstyles prior to the update of this policy, but we're just reflecting the new legal language that's been provided. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment in that I'm wondering, even though we do, at the end of the policy, put what the provision of the Crown Act is, I'm wondering if we actually want to state in one of our goals of the policy is to, I mean, we say one of our goals is to allow students to wear religious attire without fear of discipline or discrimination. I would think that we would want to explicitly spell out that we want to ensure that students are able to wear their hair without fear of discipline. It's, that should be a goal of our dress code policy as opposed to just, we reference it down below, but I personally think it should be reflected in our goals.
I have the note. Thank you. We'll take that back for review.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have scrolling down. Is that it? That's it? Because next, I'm just seeing, we did it. Okay, thank you. It always feels like a celebration when we move policy forward.
That was a lot of them, so that was good.
It was good, wasn't it? Yeah, thank you. Really well done by everybody. So, that's it for policy. Thank you.
Thank you. We're moving on to our action items. Do I have a motion to approve the framework for secondary English Language Arts courses and resource recommendations?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
Excellent. I would like to welcome Director of Teaching and Learning, Jody D. St. Hubert, to discuss this item with us.
Hey, good evening, Chair Ellenberg, Dr. Stanley, board members, community members. This, this board report has gone to the board now a couple of times, one at a workshop for discussion, as well as a board meeting for discussion. We had a month pause in between, so just reminding us of the process. So, it's in front of you for action tonight. I just want to highlight a couple of quick things. One is that this is very specific to ELA course and resource recommendations. And with that, we have a lot of important things that are still moving forward and being implemented this year in terms of our K through 12 Comprehensive Literacy Plan. So, I think it's just really important to highlight the good work that we're ready to lean into. And the one change within this from the last discussion that we had in June is highlighted in blue. Actually, there's, there's just a couple. One, one was a specific change to just the data update. When I shared it the first time, the data was preliminary, so there's a little bit of an increase of where we were at the end of the year. And so, that's in context and reality. So, those data realities are updated. And then in blue, under the course recommendations, or I'm sorry, under the secondary resource recommendations, there was a point of adding something very specific to learning styles when we're looking at resources. So, those are the things that are a little bit different than the last time you did see it. Are there any questions for me? Any feedback?
Board members?
Okay.
Thank you for this report. There's so much in it, and I, it was a good review because we, it's been now, it was two months since we saw it last time. And I know tonight, we're just looking specifically at the resource recommendation and the course recommendation. I wanted to make a note that, and I don't even know, it was in one of the links that is in here, but there was seven suggested strategies for secondary MTSS. It's on the page 18 somewhere in here. I really liked that. I really like what I saw there. And it just knowing at that secondary level, the intentionality of the work that needs to be done with secondary students and how that looks different from K5, that was just something that I, that resonated with me. So, I wanted to make that comment. And then, with the state work around curriculum and their recommendations that are coming out in January, will that have any implication for our secondary ELA work?
At this point, we are keeping that in mind and balancing that as we go. So, it won't have, at this point, it won't have any changes to this. Our team is moving forward with what, with the implementation science process and looking at some pilot resources right now. And we feel really confident that we're good to move forward with this timeline, and we'll keep an eye on that. It's definitely more specific to our elementary, and we have put a hold on things a little bit more in alignment with elementary, just to make sure that we are following the Read Act and what comes forward in January with those resource recommendations.
And then one more question, if I may. Timeline-wise, if students are registering for new classes this spring, does this, when would we see recommendations on course proposals? Is that yet this fall?
Yes, it will be this fall.
That we're hoping on that? Okay, perfect. Thank you for the clarification.
Yes. Do other board members have?
The only comment slash question I have is, the entire literacy plan from pre-K to 12 is very expansive. And sometimes I think it's hard when components of it are brought forward to understand it's one piece of a very large puzzle or umbrella. I was just wondering, and this might not be a question for you or maybe Daphne or Dr. Stanley, is there some way to come up almost with like an infographic that shows like the six different, our six to 12 literacy plan is a rainbow, and this is one of the drop, or some, something that shows so when, even for board members, when I see one piece of it, I understand sort of where this lies in the broader picture and also for the community and things like that. Does that make sense?
It does make sense, and I think that is exactly why, when I started, I wanted to make note of that there are a lot of pieces of the plan that are, so I think we're, we're in alignment in some of our thinking around that. And it is such in-depth document, right? Though that it gets hard to really follow all that.
Yeah.
And the different pieces and how it comes together as a whole. So, I think we can absolutely partner with marketing and communications on that, partner with our team on it, and figure out ways that we can bring more clarity to the entire plan.
Almost something we could just stamp on every presentation that shows, well, literally, this is where we are in the process.
Yes.
So, yeah, so.
It's a good idea.
Thank you. We will now move to vote. All those in favor of approving the framework for secondary English Language Arts courses and resource recommendations, say aye.
Aye.
Then anyone opposed, the motion carries, and the framework is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the discontinuance of the learning exchange agreement?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'd like to welcome Director of Community Education Services and Strategic Partnerships, Dr. Anne Marie Leland.
Hello, good evening, Chair Ellenberg, Superintendent Stanley, and directors and community members. To explain this request to discontinue our learning exchange agreement, I would like to provide just a little context. When I first started as a community education director 11 years ago, I was thrilled to learn, because I didn't learn this in community education school, that we had adults with disabilities programming. And it was a part of our community services statute. So it demonstrates to me and within our scope of community services, which is what the statute's called, the uniqueness and breadth of inclusivity of community education programming and services. So at the time when I first was a director, when I started 11 years ago, I was in a community that had a large state hospital, and the state hospitals all shut down in the early 1980s. And what happened with that is the adults with disabilities or unique abilities, as I would like to say, shifted to other living options. So group homes, or just being at home with the mom and dad or family that individual was a part of. And so the, what was exciting to me was the revenue at the time, when I was in my last district, we had permissive levy and state grant aid money. So it was great. Our partner was 20 minutes to the north. They also had a large facility. So that was great. But the programming and the revenue was very limited to communities in the state of Minnesota that had state hospitals to begin with. So not every school district had this revenue option. Now with the work of my association, so the Minnesota Community Education Association, wanting to spread that access more, of course, equal access across the state, they decided to lobby and pass some legislation that made every school district be able to gain some revenue directly through a formula that's in your documentation to provide programming and to widen access for our group of adults with unique abilities. So that brings me to my request to discontinue the learning exchange agreement, so we can access the direct revenue source that the Department of Education is now providing school districts for the 24-25 school year. And Edina would be able to partner with the city Parks and Rec Department to provide some programming and services. And we would use this year to gather stakeholder feedback from the community around what those program options look like. I've had conversations already, multiple, with the community education director, my peer in Bloomington, who's the fiscal host for this funding, that how it's currently set up. And he fully expects to know that other members of the consortium will also be going this direction as well. And I've had some conversations with Amanda Clark from the city of Edina, and we're ready to partner and explore our options. So with that, that is my request.
Board member questions? Comments?
Thank you for that explanation and that background, too, because that was really informative and helpful to understanding this. For my own benefit, can you explain what current services may look like for our participants who are engaged with the consortium right now?
Sure. Thank you for asking that question. Yes, it's a catalog of options. Some of the program options are cooking classes, some physical activity, music classes, some just really enrichment options. And those are delivered only onsite in Bloomington, maybe some in Richfield. So our participants in Edina would have to be transported to those communities for services and programs. So we would develop some similar programs, but also want to hear directly from our participants of what to develop that they're interested in.
So when my community ed catalog comes to my house?
Yep.
And in the back of it?
Yeah.
When it says, is that what we're talking about?
That's the adaptive. Yep, exactly.
And that's what we're talking about. So we would still, and then I believe when my city catalog comes, they also have some stuff in the back. So the idea is that we are working together with our partners at the city and saying, okay, residents who use this programming, we're going to work together to provide this, but we also want to know what you are interested in and what you would like to see. And the benefit is that it's taking out the community, they're able to access this locally.
Right, exactly.
Great.
You are correct.
That is great. Well, thank you for bringing that option to us, and also for the partnership with the city, because that just makes a lot of sense.
Oh, yeah.
So, thank you.
Anything else? We will now vote to approve the discontinuance of the learning exchange agreement. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The discontinuance of the agreement is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to calling for the general election. Do I have a motion to approve calling for the general election?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'd like to welcome Director of Business Services, Mert Woodard.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school board. This December, we'll see three of our school board members' terms expire, creating the necessity to hold a general election in conjunction with the state general election to select three board members for terms of four years each. This action item will allow us to officially notify the community and to fulfill all of our statutory obligations. Any questions? I can take those at this time.
Do board members have any questions? All those in favor of approving the calling for the general election, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion has been approved. Thank you, Director Woodard. Do I have a motion to approve policy 516.5?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Director Nimmel?
Policy 516.5 is our overdose medication policy. This is a new policy to Edina Public Schools as per recent legislation regarding this particular overdose medication. There are no changes since our July 17th discussion. Are there any questions?
We will now vote to approve policy 516.5. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Policy 516.5 is approved. That concludes our action items. Do any board members have any leadership or committee updates?
I do. Last Monday, I had the opportunity to go to the summer leadership seminar that MSBA put on, and it was all about literacy this year. And it was basically what we have been hearing here at the board level about the science of reading and the Read Act and all of that, but it was geared towards school board members. And it was extremely informative. Representative Edelson was there and spoke about the Read Act. We all got copies of the Read Act. We heard from the Center for Applied Research and Educational Improvement from the University of Minnesota, all sorts of information I can share with my fellow board members. But one of the things that was reaffirming, when I sat in that room with all those representatives from school districts across the state, was the work that this district has already begun doing. There was some panic in the room from board members who realized that this has been passed, and they are sitting with none of their teachers lettered strained, or not really understanding what this was all going to look like. So I wanted to take a moment to say thank you to those who have been working so hard to get us to this point, to the parents who have worked so hard to, you know, raise these issues and say, you know, we can do better. And so, yeah, it was a really, it was a great day. It was really informative. And I've got some reading in front of me now, lots of statutes and things, so.
Great. Thank you for sharing that. Anything else from board members? Dr. Stanley, do you have any updates?
I do. We are gearing up for the 23-24 school year. New teachers are back this week, and I just want to thank Jody D. St. Hubert and the Teaching and Learning Department for just all that they've done to put together a really great learning experience for our new teachers. We are going to welcome them with superintendent's lunch on Wednesday. Excited about that. And then, of course, next week, all of our staff will be back. We will have a kickoff for the school year next Wednesday. And so it's come fast, and yet there is so much energy around it, and we're really excited for it to come. And then along with that, the compliments have started to come already from the community. And so I'd like to read a couple of these. But first, I'd start, I'd like to start with an announcement. Really excited about this. I received this email last week. I was CC'd on it. It says, Dear Michelle Trager, MCEE is thrilled to extend our warmest congratulations to you on being selected as the MCEE High School Educator of the Year for 912. The caliber of high school candidates this year is exceptionally high, prompting us to recognize two educators in this specific category. Your dedication to nurturing the minds of your students and empowering them with a deeper understanding of economic and personal finance concepts is an inspiration. Your efforts contribute to building a stronger foundation for the economic and financial well-being of your students, and by extension, our community. Colleen Gray from the U of M goes on to share that there will be a celebration on October 6, that there will be a plaque and a certificate, and there is a monetary award, and we're just incredibly proud of Michelle. Okay, and then I had another compliment that I was CC'd on that came in. And this compliment was to Community Education Department. This is from Heather English. And she says, Hi, Anne Marie, I love the changes that were made to the Community Education catalog. It is so much easier to read, understand, and know what's being offered. I love the little stories and appreciate the list of upcoming dates on the back cover. If you have not seen the catalog, you have to pick at that catalog, because it is transformed. And, you know, last year, we had, for the summer, we had thousands of registrations. I told Dr. Leland to look out, because she's probably going to have more than thousands of registrations now with that new catalog. So thank you very much for you and your team's work on that. And then, oh, I just got this today. So this is from a parent, and it was written to Owen Kilianowski, who works in community education. She says, Hi, Owen, I wanted to send you a quick, all uppercase, thank you email on behalf of my child and our family. We were a little nervous. This kids' club was his first adventure outside of the early learning center and daycare prior to that. But, I'm sorry, it's she, had so much fun, all uppercase, and met new friends, and is more than ready for kindergarten at Concord this fall. We appreciate all of the activity planning, organization, communication, and most of all, all uppercase, fun. You provided for our daughter and the other kiddos this summer. We know it's a lot of work and are so thankful. Our girls got to do fun things over the summer while my husband and I had to work. It made us feel less guilty knowing our girls were going on adventures. Our daughter's favorite places were Fort Snelling and Cascade Bay. We hope you're able to take a day or two off before the school year begins, and wanted to say thank you again. We appreciate you and the other staff. Thanks again. So it is August 14, and we're already getting compliments like that. And I'm just always so proud of all of our staff, all of our leaders who are leading this work, and just appreciate you. And again, we're started, we're really excited for the school year to start.
Thank you, Dr. Stanley. I echo that, especially getting my kids back in school. So I appreciate it. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We will now vote to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion has passed, and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.